Yes, yes. Good evening, everyone. Since Commissioner Eggenberger is not here, I have asked Commissioner Weber to take care of her duties, so could you please call the roll? I've got my, I've got a copy. I need it back, but yes.
Commissioner Cruz. Here. Commissioner Eggenberger absent. Commissioner Foster.
Here.
Commissioner Janowski.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Singh, he's not present. Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber, present, and Chairman Zuber.
Here, thank you.
All right. And do we have a motion to approve the minutes of March 3rd?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Excellent. All right. I was waiting for you, Gordy. How about accepting the agenda? Anyone want to make a motion about that?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Lee, which I think you guys made the motions for the last, the last thing, right? You were the...
No, actually it was Brian.
Oh, Brian, okay, sorry. For the, for the approval of the minutes, sorry for Kelly's sake, it was Commissioner Weber and Commissioner Watkins. Now for the acceptance of the agenda, it's Commissioner Weber and Commissioner Lee. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Patrick, I saw an email from you that came in this evening, but anything else that we need to be aware of, or do you want to just...
Nope. No communications. There was the email sent regarding the Viva Bene. That was distributed to the planning commissioners. That was an email communication. That was the only email we had on that particular case. And then we had an email exchange today about another case regarding some traffic, which I think we can discuss near the end of the agenda under miscellaneous.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. We have a section here for public comments. If you have anything to comment about other than Viva Bene, which we have a public hearing for in just a moment, but if you'd like to speak about anything else, you are more than welcome to come to the mic. Anyone? All right. We'll move right along, then. So first item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing for a zoning ordinance text amendment on outdoor dining. Aaron, please tell us all about it. Is it not Aaron? It's Patrick.
I'll take this one.
Oh, sorry. I didn't look at the report to see who's presenting.
Oh, no worries. So we've made some revisions to the outdoor dining section of the zoning ordinance recently, and addressing a couple of different subsections that deal with the requirements for a barrier, as well as the front yard setbacks. And so what we proposed is having some discretion over the front yard setback and to allow some front yard setback encroachments, subject to approval of the planning commission, and also to allow for some modifications to the barrier requirement under certain circumstances by the approving authority. Some of the circumstances may be if there's a raised curb, if there's an opening for a walkway, something like that. So it allows some of those items to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. At the March 24th Planning Commission meeting, we presented some additional text revisions to that amendment that were not as substantive as the other ones that we presented last month on March 3rd, but we wanted to just get those in front of the planning commission at the time, just to let you know what would be coming down. So those are presented this evening in the packet. We've noticed the public hearing in the newspaper at least 15 days in advance, and on the public notice, we haven't received any public comments on it. So I'll end it there, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. So...
Oh, and just to clarify, so for this one, there would be a requirement for a public hearing, and then after the public hearing and deliberations, we prepared a model motion. And our model motion is a recommendation of approval of the amendments proposed.
Thank you. So I misspoke. There's a public hearing about the outdoor dining ordinance amendment, so anyone want to make a motion to open the public hearing?
Sure. Madam Chair, I move to rec... Oh, wait, you've got to open the public hearing for this one, right?
It's a public hearing.
For the motion, for the...
For the ordinance.
Yeah.
Got it. So I move to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee to open the public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone from the public like to address the outdoor dining amendments? Great. Close the public hearing?
Motion closed.
Motion closed. Support.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Weber to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Anybody want to make any comments about this from the board?
I think we made all the comments when, at least as far as I'm concerned, in the, when we went over this last meeting, so I'm satisfied with what, what has changed.
Anybody want to say anything else, or make a motion?
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair. I move to recommend approval of the amendment to the zoning ordinance to amend Section 6.02AA, the zoning ordinance, outdoor dining accessory to a restaurant as stated in the attached ordinance proposal.
Support.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Foster. Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Weber, would you please call the vote?
Yes. Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber, yes, and Chairman Zuber.
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. All right. Next steps, Patrick?
Next steps are that the proposed amendment will go to the Township Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees will have two readings on the proposed amendment before taking action.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Our next item is also a public hearing. It is item number 062-PDP-8525. It's called Viva Bene Canton, and we're considering a preliminary PDD for parcels, parcel number 062-99-0005-700, which is several addresses on Ford Road and Gorman Road. So the parcel is located on the south side of Ford Road and on the west side of Gorman. The proposed use is housing for the elderly with all units restricted to ages 55 and older. So Patrick, please tell us more.
Sure, thank you. The proposed preliminary PDD is for Viva Bene, and it's a proposed use for housing for the elderly, which is age-restricted to 55 and older. The proposed housing for the elderly consists of 180 units on 17 and 1/4 acres, which is proposed as 140 units of independent living in the main three-story building, and 40 attached cottage units, which are 17 two-unit cottage buildings and two three-unit cottage buildings. The site is located at the southwest corner of Ford Road and Gorman Road, and generally located between Beck Road to the west, Canton Center Road to the east. The site is currently zoned R1 and R3, and housing for the elderly is a special land use in those districts, and the proposed PDD application is consistent with the zoning requirements for housing for the elderly, with the exception of the modifications that are proposed on the plans and in the PDE agreement. For this site, back in 2021, there was a planned development district approved for a development called Monarch Grove, and I think many of you were on the planning commission at that time, although we've had some new members on the planning commission since then. Monarch Grove was a housing-for-the-elderly development, and it had more units. It had 225 units, and that had a mix of independent living, dependent living, and memory care. The proposed development for Viva Bene is 100% independent living, so there's no dependent care or memory care to that. It's fewer units, 100% independent, and those changes have been reflected in an updated traffic study, which we'll get into in a moment. When the developer of Monarch Grove was Kirkland Mannix, and since the approval in 2021, they proposed to transfer the project to Avenue Development. And Avenue Development proposes to amend the previously approved development. Although the original application for the PDD was to amend the Monarch Grove PDD, we've recommended converting Viva Bene's application to a preliminary PDD rather than an amendment to Monarch Grove. And there's a few different reasons for that. One is that the Monarch Grove PDD agreement was never recorded with the Register of Deeds, so had it been recorded, then amending something on top of it, it might have made more sense. But the developments are different in a lot of ways. They're similar in terms of a ring road that goes around it, and some of the detached, or the attached cottage units that go around the periphery, but the building looks much different. The makeup of the residence is different. So we thought that starting with a preliminary PDD without having a previously approved one recorded and then doing an amendment on top of it was a little bit cleaner, and it allows the development for Viva Bene to stand on its own rather than the comparisons to Monarch Grove. But we will make some of the comparisons, since it's a fairly recent development when Monarch Grove was approved. For a PDD, each one is required to demonstrate definite benefits to the community. The project sponsor notes several benefits. Some of the major ones are paving Gorman Road from Ford Road to the entrance of the development, and we'll bring up the plans themselves, and we can take a look in a little bit more detail in terms of what the paving plan is. So on the screen here is the layout of Viva Bene, and when Monarch Grove was approved back in 2021, the entrance to Monarch Grove was farther north, and they were proposing to pave Gorman Road from Ford Road to the entrance. The entrance drive for Viva Bene to Gorman is farther south. So this plan actually shows more paving of Gorman Road than the previously approved Monarch Grove development, because it paves south all the way to the access drive that's shown on the plans here. I think it covers most of the residences along Gorman, although I think there's a couple of residences farther south where Gorman would remain to be gravel. Some of the other definite benefits of the proposed project are similar to the previous Monarch Grove project, in that there is a proposal to extend the sidewalk along the south side of Ford Road from Gorman all the way east to the commercial development shopping center where there's Beltyre and Kroger. So if it's developed as proposed, then someone who lives in Viva Bene could walk, use the sidewalk to get from Viva Bene all the way to Kroger, the shopping center, and use the connecting sidewalks to get there. Additionally, I think the gap from the west side of Viva Bene to residential developments to the west, there's a gap there, but I think if the gap is filled, there would be even more residences in the community that would have sidewalk access to that shopping center. The applicant is also proposing the addition of northbound and southbound right-turn lights at the intersection of Canton Center Road and Ford Road. This would permit overlap phases for northbound and southbound right turns, would allow traffic to move a little bit more efficiently through that intersection, and those improvements were supported by the previous traffic study by Monarch Grove, as well as the current traffic study for Viva Bene. There are also some other definite benefits, such as more than 25% of the site is open space. 25% is the minimum required for a PDD. There are also some onsite amenities that are definite benefits to the residents themselves. They include a swimming pool, pickleball courts, dog park. So going through some of the standards of review for the staff, for the land use, as we previously noted, housing for the elderly use is permitted as a special land use in the R1 and R3 zoning districts. And the way that the density works for the housing for the elderly is it's based on a number... Whoops. Turned off. Sorry about that. It's based on a number of square feet per unit, and then projecting that to the number of acres. So 180 units for senior housing, that's mostly concentrated in one building. It's less dense than what would be allowed for 17 and 1/4 acre site, so the density is actually lower, and it's lower than the previous Monarch Grove. And the reason that housing for the elderly density is allowed to be higher than the underlying zoning district is that it's not like it's a single-family detached development that has maybe more people per unit, larger outdoor areas that are needed for yards and things like that. They don't need the extra area for driveways, for outbuildings, and the number of trips are significantly lower for the 55 and older population that this development's catered to versus single-family detached that are not age-restricted. For the schedule modifications and regulations, in planned development districts, the applicant can propose modifications from the zoning ordinance, and there are some that are proposed in this development. First is that the maximum building length for housing for the elderly is 350 feet long. What's proposed is longer, and measuring from the outer ends of the building, the distance from east to west is just over 366 feet, and the distance from north to south is just under 315 feet. So if we measure just from those outer areas, it, on one end, it's a little more than 350 feet. If we were to measure the building, the continuous length of the building, it would be significantly longer. I think the intent of having the maximum 350 feet in length is just to not have a building that is extremely large and maybe out of scale for the surrounding area, but at the same time, for a large building where there are several units for housing for the elderly, there are advantages to having everything under one roof, to be able to have residents travel from one end to the other, or if there's visitors, or even if it's an emergency response, they can go to the building, and it's easy to get from one end of the building while on the interior. So the building has been designed kind of in a serpentine shape to make it look not as long as it really is, and to have some openings and some breakages, so that there's not one continuous length of the building that is, that's over that 350-foot threshold. A second modification is to the building height. The maximum building height in the district is 35 feet, and that's measured from the grade up to the halfway point between the eve and the ridge. The building height is calculated at 37 and 1/4 feet from the grade at the building up to halfway between the, halfway between the eve and the ridge. So the building is 2 and 1/4 feet higher than what the zoning ordinance allows. The Monarch Grove plan that was previously approved, I think that was a few feet even higher than the Viva Bene, so the Viva Bene building is a little bit shorter than the Monarch Grove building that was approved. The main building is located about 94 and 1/2 feet from Ford Road, and about 295 feet from the Gorman Road right-of-way, about 243 feet from the southern lot line, and about 345 feet to the western lot line. So the building's a little bit higher than the maximum, and the building exceeds the setback requirements along all the roads, and especially is setback farther from the adjacent residences. So the impact of those extra 2 and 1/4 feet are not really seen as anything significant. One of the more significant modifications, and this is the third one, is the masonry percentage of the brick and stone on the building. There's a minimum of 50% masonry required by the zoning ordinance. The main building has 30 and 1/2% brick, 1 and 1/2% stone, and the cottage buildings have between 32 and 33% brick, and between 2.9 and 3.1% stone. And later in our review letter, we've got some tables that summarize the materials on the buildings themselves, and this will be something we talk in more detail a little bit later. The wetland setback, there are some onsite wetlands, and there's less than 25 feet proposed from any wetlands that will remain, and that's indicated on the plans. And the final modification requested is a side-to-rear separation, where the side-to-rear separation for buildings is 60 feet, and there are a couple buildings where, actually, two buildings where this applies, there's a 44.81-foot distance between two of the buildings, between the three cottage unit on the southeast part of the site, so the impact on that is pretty minimal, and it only applies to one situation. Otherwise, all of the setbacks are met for the site, for side yard, rear yard, front yard setbacks, and also the driveway length, minimum of 22 feet. The next topic is the traffic impact and the access management. The site's proposed to be accessed at two points. The primary entrance is at Gorman, and it's two-way. And at Gorman Road, I'll zoom in a little bit more. The access at Gorman Road is proposed to be widened to 30 feet, curb-to-curb at Gorman, and that would allow for a dedicated right-out and left-out to help with any backups that may take place on Gorman Road. So that would be the primary two-way access. One item that's new compared to Monarch Grove is that there is a right-in, right-out access proposed on Ford Road. That would provide some relief to the Gorman Road access and allow for any inbound that's coming from the west or outbound going to the east to use that entrance. And this is something that was not on the previous Monarch Grove plan. The previous Monarch Grove plan had a curb cut there, but it was going to be a gated emergency vehicle only. So this is a new element to the plan. The traffic study that was prepared by the applicant's consultant, Fishbeck, took that into account. The traffic impact study has been reviewed by Canton Township's Transportation Engineering Consultant, which is Manikin Smith Group. The traffic study is dated January 27th of this year, and Manikin Smith's letter is dated March 7th of this year. Manikin Smith's review letter concludes that the traffic study conforms to the current MDOT, Wayne County, and ITE standards, guidelines, and practices, but it makes two recommendations. It recommends that an eight-foot setback be added to the island from Ford Road, and that that setback be included. Also, it recommends installing a 150 to 250-foot full-width deceleration lane at the right-in, right-out site driveway at Ford Road. And this is something that we'll probably discuss in more detail later on in this meeting, because it's a recommendation from our traffic engineering consultant, but ultimately, the determination of whether to do acceleration, deceleration lanes are with MDOT. Our recommendation is that any recommendation of the preliminary PDD approval include a condition that any requirements of Wayne County and MDOT be satisfied prior to final PDD. So these are shown on the plan, and our traffic engineering consultant has looked at them, but Wayne County and MDOT, they have not completed a review on those. Going back to the density in the floor areas, we note that in the ordinance for housing for the elderly, there's 2,500 square feet of site area that's required for every one-bedroom, and there's 3,000 square feet of site area for every two-bedroom unit. So based on those calculations and the allocation of bedrooms, the net site area of 17 and 1/4 acres is far larger than the required site area for the proposed 180 units. And the residential density for Viva Bene is within the range that has been approved for other housing for the elderly uses, and that includes Bickford on Canton Center Road, Hampton Manor on Ford Road, and Antioch on Sheldon Road. The applicants have also provided a market analysis that indicates need and demand for senior housing in Canton, specifically independent living. For the sidewalk access, in addition to the frontage sidewalk and the off-site sidewalk that's proposed, there's also a lot of internal sidewalk network where residents can travel within the site to the main building and off-site using either Ford or Gorman. We've, we made previous comments on the architecture and the layout. The conceptual architectural renderings, the color renderings that are included, show a mix of brick, stone, fiber, cement, board, and windows, and the building is challenged with meeting the 50% brick. The requirements of the zoning ordinance for the 50% brick, it takes into account the entire facade, including windows, doors, any kind of opening, is included in the denominator, denominator of that building facade, and it requires the building to have 50% brick based on that. So if we start with 50% brick, then the other 50% is dedicated to doors, windows, trim, any other accents along the building. So the building can, can look much higher than 50% brick once you add in all those other materials. So on page four of our letter, we've got a breakdown of the percentage of brick, stone, fiber, cement, and windows for both the main building and the three cottage models. Additionally, on the applicant's plans, they show percentages based on either the primary building wall, a secondary building wall, or a tertiary building wall, which we can talk about in a little bit more detail later with the applicant. And our recommendation is looking at the facades and the material percentages. We recommend a higher percentage of brick and stone on the primary and secondary sides of the main building and on the cottage buildings, but it's, it's a unique building, it's a unique blend of materials, so ultimately, we'll defer to the planning commission in terms of the material percentages and any architectural modifications. For the rear elevations of the cottages, they have to show the four-foot facade, and we think that the, the four-foot facade is shown on some, but we just need verification that the rear facades have that four-foot break to show three-dimensionality. For the landscaping and natural features, there's a conceptual landscape plan that's included, but not a full landscape plan with counts and species, et cetera. There was a tree removal permit approved a few years ago for Monarch Grove, so there has been significant tree removal on the site, which was permitted with a tree permit. The developer for Monarch Grove submitted a performance guarantee, a letter of credit that's still on file with Canton, so those trees that were removed and any mitigation for those trees, those will be included as part of the upcoming landscape plan for this site, and so we'll see, hopefully, more trees planted on the site than are required by the ordinance, so that, that mitigation for which we're holding security can be present on the landscape plan. We have a comment on the parking loading, the parking meets the requirements of the ordinance. There's plenty of parking spaces, as well as some off, some detached garage areas that can be rented out. There's a 10-foot by 40-foot loading area that would have to be lengthened by 10 feet. We see that as a pretty straightforward revision. There will be lighting in a dumpster enclosure proposed, but the details of that are not shown on a preliminary PDD plan, which is fairly common. A preliminary PDD is oftentimes conceptual, so we won't see those details, but they're called out here in our letter just for future reference. And then the signage, the monument sign that's along Ford Road. We generally don't have preferences in terms of where developers locate their monument signs, but in this case, we're recommending that this proposed monument sign be moved farther east, as far east as possible, close to Gorman Road. What we want to be able to see is that if there's westbound traffic on Ford Road, that as they're approaching Gorman, they can see that sign, and they know to turn left onto Gorman and get into the site, rather than not seeing the sign, passing it, and then possibly making a left turn into the right-in, right-out access on the Ford Road. So our recommendation is to relocate that sign as far east as possible, stay out of the clear vision zone at the intersection, but to be plenty visible from the westbound traffic going down Ford. And then finally, the PDD agreement, it's based on the Township's template agreement. It includes the requirements of 55 and older for all units. There will be some additional modifications to the agreement to show the definite benefits and the scheduled modifications, as well as anything to reflect a preliminary PDD rather than an amendment based on our template. So with that, our recommendation is that we've provided a couple of different motions. One motion is recommendation for approval with conditions, and there's another motion that's prepared if the planning commission wants to postpone action. There are some areas of the plan where there are, there's more information required, and if the proposed development, if the building materials, the modifications, and the benefits are acceptable to the planning commission, we would recommend preliminary approval of the PDD, subject to compliance with the following conditions. First, modifying the traffic study and PD plans in accordance First, modifying the traffic study and PD plans in accordance with Manic Smith Group's comments. And this is something that I've since spoke to the applicants about, and something they'll want to bring up in more detail during their presentation this evening in terms of deferring more to MDOT's requirements rather than Manic and Smith's recommendation. The second recommended condition is that the PDD agreement be updated to include the definite benefits and the scheduled modifications. That should be fairly easy. The third is widening the internal road to 27 feet. The plans show the internal road at 26 feet, so if it's back-a-curb-to-back-a-curb 27 feet and it measures that way, that's great. If it doesn't, then the applicants would have to choose whether to widen it to 27 or seek a modification to keep it at 26. And then the fourth recommended condition is revising the plans to address any planning division staff comments, notably the loading space length and the sign location. So that concludes our staff comments for the preliminary PDD, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? All right. Would you like to step up and give us any more information? And while he's doing that, could we have a motion to open the public hearing?
May I, Chairman? I have a motion to open the public hearing for this project.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Lee to open the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Good evening.
Good evening. Commissioners, my name is Matt Quappas, and I'm with Avenue Development. And along with me tonight from Avenue, I have Mike Mattingly and Meg Sutton. And from the design and engineering team, I have Mike Johnson from Studio M Architecture, Joe Christopher from Swalding D. Decker and Associates, our civil engineer, and then Alyssa Wambold with Fishbeck, our traffic engineer. They would be also available to answer any questions that you have in details that me as a layperson may not be able to answer. So they're here for our benefit as well. Just like to start by saying, expressing our excitement and gratitude for this opportunity to be in front of you tonight. Personally, I'm a born-and-raised Michigander, and really excited to be back in my home state to work on this project. So just a little bit about Avenue before we get in. We are a development services firm that is purposely driven, and our purpose is to improve healthcare and health residences for seniors throughout the United States. And we've been busy on this mission for the past five years, really seeking to make this vision come to life. In our time of development, we have really run the gambit of senior living from post-acute skilled nursing care, assisted living, independent living, memory care, and now with the 55-plus living as well. Just a little bit, some of our general images of Viva Bene from a representative project. This project in particular is in St. Peters, Missouri. And really, Viva Bene means, just as it would be translated in Italian, you know, the good life and living the good life to your extent possible into your aging years. And then a little bit more just into the detail, and I think this is an important distinction of Viva Bene, especially as it relates to what this means for senior living. And we really believe that with Viva Bene, we are pioneering and redefining what it means to live in senior living. Historically, senior living's been something you go to when you have a health event, or, you know, you are no longer able to take care of yourself at home. And we have a tremendous amount of experience developing and operating those types of communities. But as we've gone along, we've realized that there really isn't a senior living option that's focused on proactively keeping you healthy and proactively keeping you as a productive, you know, aging member of your community. And that's really what Viva Bene seeks out to do. We are focused in this model on being proactive about your health and wellness. That includes, you know, care coordination when you need it, and that includes making sure that you have the tools you need to age appropriately and to be as active as long as possible. Community-oriented living is extremely important to us. Socialization as we age is such an important factor into how long you can remain healthy. So many of our residents are widowed or widowers who, you know, simply need socialization, and this really creates a community for them to live and thrive and create those relationships with like-minded and liked-age individuals. Care navigation, which I kind of alluded to earlier, we really do, in this model, help our residents navigate the healthcare system. And we do that on almost like a care concierge basis. And the fact is, by the time you reach 65 years or older, you are very likely to be dealing with two to three chronic medical conditions that require care beyond your primary care provider. And our care coordinators would be available to help through that process. Attainable living, this is maybe one of the most important benefits of Viva Bene. If you've had, you know, a loved one or yourself have been in senior living, you can understand that in many ways, it is very expensive and cost prohibitive. Viva Bene seeks to create a model that this type of residence and this type of living is attainable. And we think of attainable as being in reach. So your healthcare outcomes are within reach, your residence is within reach, your access to the community and to socialization is within reach as well. Then transforming aging, I mean, really, our goal with this product is to allow for individuals to stay healthier longer. We have two types of span as we age, right? We have our lifespan, then we also have our health span. And unfortunately, today, our health span declines faster than our lifespan. And what our goal for Viva Bene is to keep your health span running on the same parallel path as your lifespan as you age. And then finally, purposeful activity. These communities are programmed to educate on wellness, to help you navigate the care system, as I've mentioned before, but then to also give you the tools you need to stay healthy, healthier longer. And what we find is, you know, kind of going back to that community-oriented living approach here, as these communities fill up, you know, the activities and what they're doing and being purposefully active takes a whole new definition as they define what that means for their community. We went over this, Patrick did a, you know, kind of good overlay here, but I just wanted to bring this back up just in case there was any questions about that later. And then here's a colored rendition of what the site plan is currently proposed to look like. As Patrick mentioned earlier, it's 140 units of apartment-style living. That breaks into about a 50% one-bedroom and 50% two-bedrooms as options for living. And then our, of course, our 40 cottage units, which are all two-bedroom units, ranging between two-car garages and single-car garages with an appropriate amount of driveway space so that another car can be parked there if you have a gas or if you have a second car. So there's been some thought brought in for that. And then, as he mentioned, you know, this community view rich with amenities for our residents, dog park, pickleball, pool, hopefully stays warm enough that they can use that. And the other thing that just, you know, just to kind of touch on some of the modifications that are being requested as a part of this, you know, Patrick did a really good job of explaining kind of our intent with why this building serpentines. And it is a little bit longer than 350 feet, but I think it is important to note that in the bottom corner on the eastern side, so the southeastern side, that is a single-story clubhouse, which features a lot of the amenities. So, you know, coffee bar, bistro, that's where the offices will be held. If you need care coordination, that's where that will be located. So really, that is a, you know, one-story, kind of one-and-a-half-story structure. So when you kind of take that into consideration, I think we are, you know, even shorter as a building as a whole, at least at that three-story height. Here's an early conceptual rendering of the project. I know that one of the questions that staff had asked was, you know, how we are screening our mechanical units. And you can see here that these pitched roofs, the mansard approach here is actually, you know, kind of a faux roof, if you will. It creates a tub in the middle as we go down the roof line, which is where we will hide all of those mechanical units. So you will not see any of those from anywhere on the property. So we take good care into looking at that. And I think this rendering does a good job of really highlighting the diversity of materials and, you know, really trying to obtain a residential look and feel for this Viva Bene community that will then, you know, kind of very well blend in with what is already there. So I would, at this time, like to ask Mike Johnson, one of our project architects, to come up here and talk a little bit more about the thought process behind the approach to our exterior elevations and why we are asking for that modification.
Thank you, Matt. Again, I'm Mike Johnson at Studio M Architecture and Planning. Just to kind of talk a little bit to some of the things that Matt has proposed as well, the idea of senior living may have a negative connotation, or, you know, so Viva Bene and the brand is trying to do something different and do something new. So here you can see, you know, they've charged us with doing that, that, you know, that's their purpose, so that becomes our purpose as well. And as a team here, we've kind of worked towards providing something that, you know, somebody wants to come here to be at, that doesn't have the, again, that connotation that it's a senior living and it's where we go to for that, those parallel paths to cross and kind of let things just fade. So this is something that we've looked to make timeless and kind of, you know, look into the, you know, give that residential effect, make it somewhere, again, where somebody wants to live and be a part of and be active and attractive and contribute to the community in the development that, you know, Canton is wanting. So there are more elevations. Okay. Yeah. So you can see here, just really, you know, the, you know, kind of just in general, architectural move is rather simple, but we feel elegant. You know, one of the strategies to, one of the things that we've done a lot recently is kind of increase our roof pitches. It gives you a more elegant feel. And then that also helps to screen the mechanical equipment. So a lot of architectural moves that are, you know, dual-purpose. And then, you know, regarding the brick and the windows and the percentages, so what we are up against with the zoning, with the 50% minimum, is the three-story building is really more dense. Part of the recommendations we're designing to R1 and R3, and those are typically single-family or duplex-type buildings. And this three-story building has per-unit less exterior wall. So you can see our cottages below here in this rendering, there's more exterior wall. So where we're a multifamily building, you could say we, per-unit, there's only one exterior wall versus a single-family would have four, or a duplex would have three exterior walls. So we, so there's a kind of a mathematical equation there that's a little bit harder here for the density of this building, which, again, the density is still less than previously approved. However, we've still invested in, you know, 30% to 35% roughly of brick, so we're still investing in the more expensive, the nicer material. But the other part of the living and creating the space within that people want to be in is daylight, access to outdoor space. So when, again, when we're working with the Avenue team and we want to provide exterior space, we want to provide natural light ventilation to the units, larger units, larger doors, or, sorry, larger windows, larger doors was something that was purposeful here to, again, natural light, natural ventilation. So when we, if you look at premiums that we've spent on the facade, we're brick maybe considered the premium facade material at 50%, we've really, our premium materials are really brick and windows, and especially black windows are also a premium, you know, again, a kind of a timeless, elegant look that we're going for. So, again, this is the, focused on the primary facades and secondary facades. I don't know what else is here to look at here, Mr. Sloan, if you, yeah, okay. Back to Matt here. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, and I think that, you know, just in general, you know, we've taken a lot of effort here to create balconies for every single unit within the community so that you have that outdoor space, even if you don't want to, you know, go out one day, maybe that, you know, it's raining, but you still have the ability to kind of step out on a nice spring rain day and catch some of that. So, you know, to do that, right, you've got to take up more of that exterior facade for glazing and for doors, which kind of gets us into the situation we're in. And I would say that on our primary facade, while Mike mentioned it is, you know, 30-ish percent brick, when you include the window and door sizing into that calculation, between windows, doors, and brick, it's 77% of the exterior. So that leaves about 23% for other materials like fiber cement siding. Patrick went through this, but I did want to highlight, you know, just some of the definite benefits of this project. Certainly, the open space, that was a very important element for us, is just to make sure that this is an aesthetic park-like setting, you know, where individuals want to be, want to hang out, and really can just, you know, find a nice serene place to live. The outdoor amenities, we were very, this actually went back and forth for quite some time. We're very thoughtful about trying to get all of our amenities to the center of this site so that whether you're living in a cottage or you're living in the main building, you have equal access. And while it's not as easy to point out here, we do have some parking spaces dedicated to golf carts in the event that a cottage resident would like to use a golf cart and use that for traveling to the amenity spaces, they can do that. And then, of course, the architecture, which we've talked about, we feel that very much blends in with the community. And really, you know, just thinking about where this community is located with the commercial district right to the east of us, and then the transition into residential as you get, you know, through the site and then getting closer to Beck. It's my understanding that some of the work that's going on within Canton is to, you know, work on the master plan for some of these major intersections. So what I see, you know, in the future, if, I'm guessing, is that we'd have the commercial as you're around Canton Center, and then as it transitions down forward into the residential, and then as you get to that hard intersection at Beck and Ford, very likely that'll be, you know, some sort of mixed-use commercial in the future. So this is a nice progression as you move down Ford Road. And that was something that we spent a lot of time studying to make sure that would become possible. So as I mentioned, you know, our design team, engineering team is here this evening to answer any specific questions that you may have. In closing, just for this portion, I would, you know, simply request that we are able to receive your approval tonight based on the conditions that the planning staff has outlined. Happy to talk through any of those. In particular, the 27-foot width on the road, that is actually something we are accomplishing. It's just a kind of a misprint on the plans. From back-a-curb-to-back-a-curb, it is 27 feet. The planned agreement to include the modifications we're talking about tonight, we'll make sure we get that to the township. The one that I do want to just spend a little bit more time talking about and asking for your help on, or just to have discussion around and consideration, would be the recommendations that the traffic consultant, Manic and Smith Group, had made for Ford Road. The, bringing the island back, if you will, to make that right-in, right-out, that should not be a problem. But, you know, that plus the A-cell, D-cell lane that's been mentioned in their recommendations will ultimately be something that MDOT needs to review and ultimately make a decision on what they want to see since they have jurisdiction on that road. So my request here would be that we can have the time between this preliminary PDD and by final PDD, which is outlined in this agreement, we would have MDOT's requirements as well as Wayne County Road Commission's requirements for those, and we can commit that we will implement the requirements that they have as it relates to traffic control measures. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak about this project? Sir, please come to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Chris Obazinski. I am a resident at 1852 Crosswick Court in Canton, Michigan. So I have a copy of this that I also sent to Mr. Sloan. Thank you so much for responding, and I'll provide this to you as well if you'd like it. So I've been a resident of Canton, Michigan for about 48 years, okay? So basically, all my whole life. So I would like to stress that there is no benefit to the Canton community in this. The only benefit that it stays is paving. in this. The only benefit that it stays is paving a sidewalk and paving Gorman Street. So I would like to say that I'm sure the residents of Gorman Street would rather prefer that that remain dirt than look at this monstrosity of a building. So this is not any benefit to the Canton community unless these all, all these spaces, the dog park, the swimming pool, everything is open to the public. There's just a benefit to the community at, at the residency. So also, this development does not meet the definition of housing for the elderly. The community is 55-plus. So the age of elderly is recognized by the U.S. government and the World Health Organization is 65-plus. So there is no care going on at this facility at all. It's just independent living. Let's call it what it is. It's an apartment complex. Okay. This development should be held to the standards of R1 and R3 pursuant to the, the zoning restrictions of 6.03-a-1. So, and also note that all residents, not just the owner of the residence in your facility, should meet the minimum age requirement regardless of what it is. Otherwise, that also negates the need, or negates that special land use allowed for this housing of the elderly. So the first thing here is also, it proposes a safety risk to the public of Canton, Michigan. So from a traffic standpoint, 200 to 300 additional cars on Ford Road. It's apparent that none of you live in the city of Canton or the township of Canton. I've seen people die on Canton, on Ford Road. Ford Road has six of 10 most dangerous intersections in Wayne County. Three of those are in the state of, as in the state of Michigan. Okay. So this traffic study was clearly done by the same company that did Raising Canes, which we also had to allow for overtime for our Canton Public Safety Resources on traffic duty on overtime.
Sir, could you just make sure that you're talking into the mic? Because otherwise the recording doesn't pick you up. So thank you.
No problem. So the second thing is, uh, the safety issue is water management. So we all know water management is a considerable safety issue in this township. So have we forgotten in 2003, or 2023, in August, where we had actually people kayaking in Kohl's parking lot? Even last week, our drainage systems were also tasked. My sump pump runs every few minutes at this point in time. The adjacent properties of Cobblestone Ridge, which I'm a resident of, are at risk based on that retention basin that you see, that you've got, you, you put in as a water feature. What happens when that overflows? That overflows into Fellow's Creek Drain. We all know Fellow's Creek Drain and Willow Creek Drain that are in Canton Township are already overtasked. This could cause damage to properties adjacently. So I'd like to know if the developers have notified, or the township has notified the Cobblestone Ridge Homeowners Association as well, of the potential risk, because as that water flows over into Cobblestone Ridge, that goes into our drainage system that we own in Cobblestone Ridge, and that could cause damage.
Sir, thank you very much. Your three minutes is up. So everybody gets three minutes to speak.
I'd like to submit this, I'd like to make sure that all this is submitted for record.
Thank you.
We have it. We received it today, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Anyone else from the audience like to address the project?
Madam Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Lee to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. I'm going to start with Commissioner Watkins.
Great, thanks so much. So I think I see Mike Maddling out there. If I can get you at the mic, that would be great. So I'm just an A-head developer guy. I'm probably easiest out of the folks here. And I just have a few questions for you, since you, I think this is kind of, you guys have started this thing out of Indy. I was just in Indy this weekend, and I saw some of your developments. So, looks like your sweet spot is about 160, 180 units for all of these Viva Bene branded, I'll call them senior buildings.
Yes, sir.
Great. So with this, if you can go back, Patrick, to the, I'd like to see the aerial of the site plan. The Serpentine Building, how many units are in the actual, that, that superstructure that, right, yeah, in the middle? How many units are there connected?
140.
140 there. So I did get an opportunity to look at the, and thank you so much, there's an economic impact analysis in there, which I never typically see at this level. So thanks so much. You estimated that there's about a half a million dollars in, I'll call it, generated tax revenue by way of these units. That doesn't really go a long way, but what I will say is, I think it's, it is a definite benefit when we start to talk about benefits of, of additional multifamily housing units. The one thing that's important to me is Ford Road. And the gentleman in the back was pretty accurate when he talked about Ford Road. There's quite a bit more traffic than has been anticipated. And I love to see a little bit more in terms of a traffic study, but I know that depends on our good friends at MDOT and Wayne County, there go those two names again, that have plans for Ford Road, all the way from 275 all the way down to about Canton Center. And we're in a situation where that project doesn't even start until 2028, and you guys are planning to be done by 2027. So you see the situation it puts us in. It allows us to come to the table and have to make decisions on something that's happening that will be greatly impacted by the things that happened with MDOT and by Wayne County. And I'll use this example again, my, my colleagues here hate me using it, but you have a really great turkey that you're basting here, all right? It looks good. You've got it all buttered. You've got the things. And I don't want to get to the point where you've got it in this pan and now our oven isn't big enough for you to put it in. Now, I've looked at your development down in St. Peters, Missouri, fantastic building. This one's probably, will probably just as fantastic. I'm not a fan of the color structure here. In St. Louis, you've got it looking really beautiful with blues and neutrals. I don't know why you've done this here with us, but I'll leave the architect to talk about that. But I'm just not sure at this point if we're at the juncture where we need to be able to say, yes, this is, you know, what we need to do. We're at the PDD stage. I get it. But I, I, once again, we're here. You're not the only developer. You can call whoever you want, call all the developer names. But once again, we have to make decisions on something where it's going to be greatly impacted by things that happen extremely proximate to your development and where you guys have proposed. So I caution you today, we may make some decisions here that may allow us to move forward, but you've got a lot of work to do in order to make sure this development is right for not only our community, but for Ford Road, our main thoroughfare. Thanks so much. Madam Chair, back your hands.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lee?
Well, the points were hit. I mean, we got water issues, we got road issues, we got development on Ford, Ford Road that's, it's almost like we need to build a, a median that goes straight through all the way down Ford Road. This reminds me of, by the way, I kept looking, I said, what does this remind me of? It actually reminds me of Henry Ford Village at a much smaller scale, that you got facilities for people to live and actually do everything internally. That's an amazing structure in Dearborn, being able to get in there, because I had some people I had to visit. But I was so amazed at the billiard tables, you got billiards here and all that kind of stuff. But I like the development, I'm going to just say overall, but the issues are right, as the residents are saying. It's traffic, water, and all the things that we don't control, meaning we don't control the roads, you know? There would be things that we would want you to do that we don't have control over. The water is one that wetlands are out of our control too, as I understand, I'm learning. So I like the development, as I said, but I, I'm cautious as well for all the things that you're going to have to do to make this thing really work and not add more problems, add more challenges, I'm sorry, more challenges to developing in Canton. That's all I have.
Well, could I, could we have all of our comments first?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, sorry, okay, okay.
Yeah, let's, we'll just let everybody ask questions and you can respond at one time. Thank you. Commissioner Weber?
So I have a number of comments, I guess, and probably everyone's going to roll their eyes when I say that. Kind of commenting about the development itself and also addressing some of the concerns that our, our citizen commented about earlier. I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Watkins had said. And overall, I like the concept. First of all, I want to correct something that Mr. Obazinski, but how do you pronounce your name? I'm sorry. Oh, Obazinski said, the law on elderly persons now regarding housing is 55-plus. That was Federal Fair Housing Act that was enacted by President Clinton in 1995. So, so it meets the definition. So I just want to clear that up. Traffic is an ongoing issue in Canton and specifically Ford Road. Before anything could happen here, and I know we don't control it, but I would want to see the left-hand turn lane that extend all the way down Ford Road at a minimum, as it, it ends right now right by your property, and then picks up again in front of Cobblestone Ridge. I would want that all the way through. I'd want the deceleration lanes in. You know, the water management, I'm not the engineer on that. I'm not going to comment on that, except to acknowledge all the flooding issues. I'm going to comment more on the aesthetics. I don't love it. It looks kind of stark to me, to be honest. I'm not, first of all, I'm going to say that I'm not a big proponent of the whole 50% brick thing. I can live without that. I'm not, it's not a hill I'm going to die on. We've had those discussions in our master plan studies. I'm open to alternative surface materials and things of that nature, but I really don't like these colors. And maybe these renderings don't do this justice. I'm all for a contemporary, more look, but this, to me, this looks prison-like, to be honest, according to these renderings. So I think you've got some work to do there. The other question I have, you made a comment about how you want to make these types of developments accessible for people. And I, and I don't mean like handicap accessible. I'm talking about income-based, and that's what, what is, what are, what, what kind of costs are we talking about for these, this, this facility? I mean, I know you're talking about all the amenities ahead, and that's great, but I'd love to be able to put my parents in a facility like this. My parents can't afford a place like this, I'm assuming. So, and I don't consider them particularly poverty-stricken or anything like that, but they can't afford this. Maybe I'm wrong until you comment on that. But I think there, I think there needs to be some improvements. I will disagree slightly with Mr. Obazinski, I'm sorry about keep butchering your name. I think the community benefit goes beyond just the sidewalk and, and paving Gorman Street. I do think there is a need for more elderly housing in the community, as, as I think there's a need for more affordable housing for the other spec, other side of the spectrum in our age group in this community. But I, I want to see this property get developed. And like I said, I like the concept. I just, I just think the development itself needs some work.
That's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Chenowski, I'm sorry. Did you want to talk now? Did you, I just?
Did you, or did you want some?
No, I was, I was just skipping because, because you were talking down there. So it was a little distracting. That's okay. Commissioner Foster?
Um, thank you. I don't want to repeat a lot of what has already been said. I largely agree with Commissioner Watkins, Commissioner Lee, and Commissioner Weber about, you know, the issues on Ford Road and the traffic. I know this, this is the very beginning of the process. So, I mean, I would be willing to see, you know, where it goes in conversations with MDOT and Wayne County, but like Commissioner Watkins said, I think, you know, we've got a, a long way to go to get to where I think this commission would feel comfortable having this development on Ford Road. But I do agree with Commissioner Weber. I do think that there is benefit to having this type of property in the community. I do also agree on the aesthetics. It looks kind of like an old school to me. I don't know if I would go with what you said, Commissioner, prison, but it does look like an old school to me. And I do think it would look a lot better with different colors. But I think, you know, this is the very beginning of the process. I know sometimes it's really hard getting, you know, conversations with MDOT and Wayne County and like figuring out some of the traffic issues. So I would be willing, you know, to start this process and let's see where we get.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Patrick, PDD, how does our ordinance define public benefit? Is it the benefit to this particular community or the benefit to Canton Township in general?
There, there are benefits that are listed in the ordinance that apply to both. So some of the definite benefits that apply to a particular site can be preservation of natural features. It can be the architecture. It can be pedestrian connections. And the list that's in the ordinance is not exclusive. So there can be other things that are considered definite benefits. So, for example, if an applicant or a developer plants more trees than the ordinance requires, that's a definite benefit, because once those trees are on the site plan, they become part of the development. They're required, preserving more open space than 25%, we've considered to be definite benefits. Wherever there's an opportunity to increase the size or capacity of a stormwater pond, we consider those to be onsite definite benefits. For the offsite definite benefits, most of the time, it includes offsite traffic improvements, offsite sidewalk construction. In some cases, there have been other types of offsite improvements, but the major ones apply to traffic and sidewalks. But there can be a number of other things in the ordinance that, that can be definite benefits. The recreational component that are listed, like the pool and the pickleball courts, those are related just to the residents. Only the residents can use that. But having that type of amenity in a facility where the ordinance doesn't require it is a benefit for the facility itself.
But it's not a benefit to the township, really, the public.
Correct.
Because what you're saying, I get it, is trees, environment, it's a benefit to the community, stormwater, things like that. But recreational facilities are exclusive for this development, are not a benefit to the township, really. Because no one, we, we couldn't come in and use that. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a benefit, anything offsite or anyone who doesn't live there. It wouldn't be a benefit, like a public benefit, like a sidewalk or a traffic signal improvement or planting more trees. But benefits that exceed the ordinance requirements, they can apply only to residents of a, of a development. We often look for both, of things that are good for the onsite residents that exceed the ordinance, and offsite benefits where neighbors and surrounding areas also benefit.
Good. I, you know, I like the, the benefit of the sidewalk is apparent. There's two properties on the frontage. Do you own those? You don't own those properties, correct, from Bell Tire? So we're going to build, you're going to build in the right of way, connect those sidewalks. Patrick, I recommend that when those developers come in to develop, that somehow they contribute to Canton's parks or something through a sidewalk fund, because they're actually fitting the bill for their sidewalk, which, you know, eventually they may develop, you know? I just want to note that, you know, going forward, that, you know, we, we should get something from those two property owners, since this developer is connecting that sidewalk for public benefit.
And those are things that, if, if these properties are ever developed, which I think there's, there's a lot of wetlands on those properties, so it, it's questionable the development potential. But if they do, if there are existing sidewalks, if they come in with a PDD, there may be other types of benefits that they can do with the understanding that they have their sidewalks built. But when the sidewalks are constructed, being the adjacent property owner, they will be required to maintain them and repair and, if necessary, reconstruct them. That'll be up to the adjacent property owner.
Okay, so... Did the developer talk about wetlands on this site? Has there been any wetlands or Eagle applications for wetlands? Because I just looked at the Eagle wetland map. There's wetlands all over this site. We have another Chick-fil-A here. So has there any, been any discussion before you guys planned this to Eagle applying for a wetland permit or getting a wetland consultant on board? And the reason I bring this up is, again, like Commissioner Watkins said, you go to all this trouble and then it dies. Top Golf is dying because of wetlands. So I, you know, you can address that when, when you guys get up here, but that's one of my concerns. So I, I agree with the building. The buildings are not beautiful, and I'm echoing what everybody just said. And I think you just need to reexamine. and I think you just need to reexamine the aesthetics of the buildings. It, it's just not, you know, it doesn't come out at you and, you know, it's not that impressive. Um, and I, I'm sure you're going to address that. And the last point is what everyone said, Ford Road. Patrick, this auto clinic, what is the deal with this friggin' auto clinic? I mean, how are they allowed to put their cars and this curb almost in the roadway? Are they grandfathered in? And that's really preventing you from do, from bringing in traffic, you know, with a left turn, really. I, I think that's why you did it. Look at that. I mean, you could never build that right now.
Well, that's a good day.
That, that is a good day. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, um, it's, it's zoned residential, so it's a non-conforming use, which presumably the, the commercial use was established long before the residential district was applied to the site. Um, so it's, it's a, as far as we know, a, a non-conforming use that can continue, it's just not allowed to expand. Um, so I think it's operated in a similar manner as it's currently operating for, for several years. In terms of, uh, the parking of, of the cars and being in the roadway, historically.
It's in the right-of-way, definitely, right?
Yeah. Yeah, historically, I don't know. I, we could probably look at old aerial photos to see, you know, before the right-of-way was even that, why did they park cars there back in the day?
The orange line is the right, right-of-way?
Uh, according to this map, it's not a survey line, but it's pretty close.
And, and you could see how MDOT is allowing for future expansion, but not this auto clinic, just, it's, it's unbelievable that they've been able to get away with it.
Yeah, so roughly 120 feet?
Yep, that's right. Like a four-lane highway. Anyways, um, the, the point I'm making is, uh, I, this is going to be a deterrent for future development for, for Canton, this, this one issue right here. And it, it's prevented this developer from making the left turn. Really, you, you can't make the left turn is because you can't widen on that north side. Uh, and I'm glad you guys recognize that. Uh, the one thing, uh, I want to be clear on is, one, the geometrics of that little pork chop island has to be revised. People will make that, if they can make that left turn, they're going to make that left turn in there and ru, run over that, so it needs to be greatly improved, um, from that little dot right there. Yeah, that's, that's a little speed bump right there. Um, and then the other thing that caught my ear is you're not wanting to commit to the Manikins Smith recommendations and you're hanging your hat on that, oh, MDOT's got to prove it. I wanted to be clear that what Manikins Smith is proposing, that the developer should go into MDOT with those recommendations and site plan and not a blank slate, and you'll be bound by what MDOT's decision after that. I want to be clear on that, and, uh, if it isn't, I mean, I, I, there's no way I would support this project. Um, but to not commit to anything and hanging your head on MDOT, I don't think that's, that's going to be acceptable.
That's all I got. Thank you to our resident traffic engineer. All right. Commissioner Janowski?
I concur with everybody else in regards to the roads. You can see that the roads and the water is a big problem here, so if you want to give a public benefit that helps you, I would focus on those. I actually, unlike everybody else, whoever's the architect on it, I actually loved the design, so I'm an oddity. I liked the banding at the third floor. I thought on the side there could be a little bit more, uh, take the black and bring it into the center, but that was just, I don't know, it was just me. So aesthetically, I thought it worked pretty good. Um, great scale, the layout I like. There's only one issue that I see with that, like, there's like a Y going on, but everything, the layout and everything, and I actually, I think that this is actually, besides the traffic, I think this is actually a beautiful development. I, I love the Serpentine building with the light coming in and all the features, so I think it was real, really nicely done, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have a couple of questions. Um, I wasn't real clear from the package, and maybe I missed it, but are these rental units or condos, are they being sold or, or rented? Um, and then for Patrick, uh, in sort of backbone, backing on what Commissioner Cruz said, do you know, does MDOT have any plans to widen Ford Road between Beck and Bell Tire? Because it's just odd that they've spent all that money widening the intersection at Beck Road years ago, and then it narrows back down and then widens again in just a half, you know, quarter mile or whatever that is. Um, but I just am curious if there's any plans that we know of.
I haven't heard of any plans to do any widening in this area. The, the focus is on, um, obviously, the Boulevard project, uh, much farther east, and then there's some intersection improvements along the corridor that are, that are being discussed, but nothing with widening here.
Okay.
And then to answer the first question, it's proposed to be rental units.
Rental units, okay.
Yep, 100% rental proposed.
Thank you, thank you, okay. And then the north and southbound turnlights at Ford and, and Canton Center, I recall those being part of another project. Was that Monarch or was there somebody else who was proposing that? Because I didn't remember it being affiliated with Monarch, but...
Um, yeah, that was part of Monarch Road.
Okay, okay, because I've been waiting, like, I get it to that intersection, I'm like, when are these right turn arrows going to come? I really want those. Anyway, so I look forward to that. Um, regarding the architecture, uh, my business is called Studio Z Architecture, just for the record, um, but, um, the four-foot offset in the back, it looks like that doesn't happen on several of the smaller units, um, the, the freestanding buildings, but I don't think that would be difficult to achieve. Um, I'm curious about the decision to swing the French doors out on those units, but, because they're not, it's not a covered porch, so it seems odd to have French doors opening out. Um, but, uh, just curious about that. And then, uh, the aesthetics, I guess I'd have to concur with Commissioner Janowski. I, I don't mind them. Could they be more colorful? Sure. Um, I didn't get a prison vibe, but, um...
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm not an architect, I'm just a lawyer.
You're entitled to an opinion. No, I didn't really get a school vibe. I get a little tutor vibe from the steep little, the steep little roofs over... What's that?
A white-collar prison.
A white-collar prison, yeah, exactly. Um, I, I don't, I don't know, I, I, they could, there could be a little more detail, there could be a little more color, but, um, but I don't hate them. Um, so, those are my questions. Um, so, turn the, the, the mic back over to you to respond. Matt, thank you.
Sure, no, thank you for the comments. Um, I appreciate it. So, um, I'm going to ask for, at some point, Joe Christopher from SDA to come up to speak a little bit to the, the water, stormwater detention. Um, the reality of that is, is those, while they may be nice to look at from a pond perspective, but they do have a purpose and they are control measures to make sure that we can avoid a flood event, and I just want him to be able to explain all the detail that we put into the, make sure that, you know, is in, in fact, the case. Um, so, just, um, I'm going to try to respond somewhat in sequential order, but if I get it out of order, I apologize. Um, but Commissioner Watkins, um, you know, going back to the economic incentives, you did ask a good question about the, you know, the incremental tax on, on this type of development, and I think one of the things that I'd like to point out about this particular type of development is that this is, you know, call it 100% of the tax with zero tax on your school district. So that is really what separates this from a traditional multifamily-type development. Now, that's not to say that a 55-year-old person, um, may not still have a, a child, which to a certain extent is allowed in this type of setting, but the reality is our average age of a resident is nearing 70 years old. So while the federal, um, definition of housing for the elderly is 55-plus, in practice and in reality, that isn't really what you see here. So, um, I do, I do just want to point that out.
Just, could you repeat, the age is 70 or 78?
70, I'm sorry, yes.
70, okay, I wasn't clear what you said. Thank you.
On the, I'm just, kind of, this is a blanket statement, on the, on the traffic piece of this, um, I am no way looking to defer any obligations. I understand the reality of the, the current traffic situation that, um, Ford Road presents. I mean, we, when we come to visit the site, we come to meetings, I, I'm aware of that. Um, I think one of the things that I would just point out, though, is that there was a PDD approved for this site previous to this one, which had more units and it had more staff, and it also had more commercial deliveries as a part of bringing food to the building every day, as a part of bringing housekeeping supplies, medical supplies, and the like to the campus. We, we heard very early on with our meetings, uh, with the planning staff here in Canton, that traffic was a big concern. So we took that very seriously, which is why we brought down the density on the site overall and revived, and revamped the traffic study to ensure that we were capturing the right ITE code, to make sure that we were being very honest about the impact of the traffic. And the reality of that study, what it ultimately concludes, is that this project does not add any additional traffic burden that the other, a project that was previously approved would. So, I mean, from a, from a stand, from that standpoint, um, I understand, you know, I, we will go to, we are going to go to MDOT, we obviously will need to have those conversations with them, um, but, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to be in a situation where the project, you know, gets tabled for two or three years because we're waiting on something from MDOT. Uh, it just, it doesn't seem like the, the right spirit in which to approach this project, which we want to see move forward, um, as it currently sits. Commissioner Weber, you had asked the question about just affordability and accessibility, and, you know, attainable living is one of the, the models of this, and I just wanted to share a few, a few stats, um, for, for the, for the commission. So, by, um, in the year, so we, we run all of our, uh, demographic data through ESRI, which is one of the, you know, the most accepted forms of getting at demographic information. So, within a five-mile radius of this site, there are over 30,000 households age 55 and older. Of those 30,000 households, 70% of those, based on their income, can afford to live in a unit at Viva Bene.
Okay.
For a senior, for a traditional senior living building, that is closer to 40% of those individuals. So we are capturing 30% more of the 55-plus seniors within a community in making this type of housing attainable for them.
But that doesn't really answer my question.
Okay.
My question is, what, what is the cross, cross point here?
Our, our, our costs are very similar to what a market-rate multifamily would run for...
Okay. Fair enough.
Which is about 40 to 50, uh, 40 to 50% less than traditional...
So you're probably talking, you're probably talking $4,000 to $5,000 a month?
No, no.
So give me a number.
Our, our starting units were around $1,700 a month.
Okay, and that includes all the amenities?
That includes all the amenities. That is your rent.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was asking.
Yep.
Okay, that's fair.
Now, if you want the, you know, the cottage, and that's going to be more...
No, it's different, I under, I understand, I understand that.
Yep. Um, as far as the, the architecture is concerned, I know, you know, architecture is art, artist's objective. I completely understand that, um, would be happy to look at and study ways to add color, um, and to make some of that, you know, facade come to life a little bit more. Um, I think, you know, Commissioner Watkins, you made reference to really liking the look of the, uh, St. Peter's project, and, you know, we can certainly do that. Uh, so that, you know, that, that to me is something that we can work on improving as we go through this process. And then with regards to the wetlands, um, comment and Commissioner Cruz, that, that question, appreciate that question. Um, this project has already purchased the wetlands mitigation credits necessary to make this possible. Uh, there is a permit that's already active for this site, uh, which our development should, um, we're working with Eagle on that, but we believe that it will cover, uh, all of our bases from a wetland perspective. So I completely understand. I mean, you're in Michigan, you're going to deal with wetlands, so you need to make sure that's a part of your diligence process. Um, and then, Patrick, Commissioner Zubor had answered your question about the, um, the rent first owned, so yes, this is a rental model, um, month to month, um, and as far as the offset, uh, four-foot offset on those, um, I think we've already addressed that. We did have a few that planning staff did flag that we've already addressed. And then the door swing out, uh, good catch, we'll take a look at that. Uh, before, we had a, a roof, kind of contemplated overhang, uh, but that created some challenges, so I think that's probably just, you know, um, something that we'd have to kind of true up during our QA QC process, so we appreciate that. So at this time, I would, I would ask, um, Joe Christopher from Spalding Ddecker to come up to talk a little bit more about the, the amount of effort we're putting into the stormwater facilities to make sure that we can, um, you know, make sure that's not an issue with this development.
Very brief, because we do have a lot of items still on our agenda, so...
Okay, yes. Uh, Joe Christopher with Spalding Ddecker, we're the engineering consultant on the project.
Um, first of all, I'd just like to say that we obviously have to abide by Wayne County Department of, uh, Public Services. They will review our plans, we'll meet their requirements. In addition to meeting their requirements, we're looking at ways of adding additional storage volume as well as reducing the outlet rate beyond what the requirements are. So, without getting too technical, during the storm, less, less flow would come from, from the Viva Bene site and not overburden the existing system, letting that storm pass through, and then we would hold our, our stormwater back longer. You have a question? So that's what we need to get in, we're not even close to engineering design at this point. You know, we're sizing, we, we've sized the ponds based on a certain percentage over for volume, but we need to look at if we also reduce the flow rate that's going to increase our volume requirement. So, I, what, what size does that, you know, pond become and, and how do we capture that stormwater? So that's what we're, we will be looking at as we move forward with engineering design. And that is the ultimate goals of the stormwater design, is to reduce the flow rate beyond what is required by Wayne County.
And one of the, um, one of the items we've talked to the applicant about is the current stage, we're at preliminary PDD review. If the preliminary PDD is, is approved, the next step would be for the applicant to proceed to final PDD, and the applicant has indicated that if their, uh, if their preliminary PDD is approved, when they get to the stage of final PDD, they will most likely combine that with site plan review and try to do final PD and site plan concurrently. Um, that can have some advantages to, when we look at things like stormwater capacity, where if, if there's a site plan level detail on a final PDD, we can get into the stormwater details, we can talk to our, uh, staff civil engineers and look at the volumes and the outlet rates and get a little bit more specific on the sizing and see if we can incorporate that into a final PDD agreement.
What do we think?
I don't want to prolong this meeting. I want to know, not from you, maybe not tonight, uh, I like to know what, and, and that's not in person, I just, I don't want to prolong the meeting. I want to know, how do you, purchasing, um, wetland rights, what does that mean? Don't do it now, but I, I really would like to understand that, because that's puzzling to me. All I'm thinking about is my basement is flooded and I don't have, you, sometime, that's all. I, I just want to get that. I just want to understand that. Thank you.
Make a note of that, Patrick.
Yeah, in, um, 20 seconds or less, I promise. Um, in the state of Michigan, if, if there's a wetland proposed to be filled in, um, to mitigate that, Eagle has a system where you can buy credits to a, a wetland that's been constructed for mitigation. It can be in the same watershed or in the same ecoregion.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
But you, it, it doesn't always happen. I mean, it's the quality of the wetlands, like Topgolf, they assess the quality of the wetlands, so you couldn't just give...
Toss credits.
Cards out like that, so it depends. Eagle can be finicky like that.
So I, I think there's a number of things that they need to address. I think, and I don't want to speak for the whole commission, but I, I, I think generally we're supportive of the project, but I...
But, I think there's a number of things that the developer needs to address before we can make a certain decision on this. I would be in favor of postponing action on this for right now, pending some of the alterations or revisions or investigation that we've discussed here tonight.
Anyone else?
What does it specifically mean? So, the PDA thing, usually you give us guidance, so like, what's this going to withhold us from later to keep the development going or?
Thank you, Mr. P. PDD, not PDA. Nobody's doing any PDA. Not that I've seen.
So, at this stage, it's preliminary PDD, which the plans are more conceptual in nature, and there's often no final decisions made. In many cases where we've done preliminary PDDs, there have been some unknowns where we've identified them and clearly stated that if it's an unknown, a lot of times, a decision is deferred to final PDD. So, like in the case of the Top Canton/Topgolf development, I remember at that preliminary PDD, it was approved with several conditions. And among those was deferring action on a lot of their modifications until final PDD, because there was a lot still in flux. So, the preliminary PDD gives an opportunity to defer some of those final decisions. We just recommend stating which ones they are, just so that there's guidance for the applicant and documented for the record in terms of what they may need to accomplish between preliminary PDD and final PDD. The applicant, or the Planning Commission has the, they have the option of postponing action. If there is anything within the plans or other documents that the Planning Commission feels that they need before they can make a recommendation on the preliminary PDD. So, ultimately, it's just a decision of the comfort level of the Planning Commission of what additional information you may want now before a recommendation on the PDD, or what you're comfortable deferring to final PDD. At the stage of final PDD, there's also another public hearing, and any conditions of preliminary PDD are reviewed at that time to see if they've been fulfilled based on designs or new information or outside agency reviews or anything else.
I don't see much difference, like, from our perspective, from postponing it to approving it with conditions, which you've laid out in the model motion. I think I would be comfortable with approving it with the conditions laid out by the commission and some of the comments that were made.
Patrick, so, this is the preliminary PDD. It'll go through what steps final still? It'll come back before us? Is that right?
Yes, I should have mentioned that earlier. So, with a PDD, and I see in the report, it didn't have the next steps. So, if the preliminary PDD is recommended for approval, the next step is for it to go to the Township Board of Trustees for final action. And the Township Board can decide whether to approve or not approve a preliminary PDD, and then they adopt the official conditions. And then, if the preliminary PDD is approved by the board, then the applicant would then come in subsequently with final PDD. And it's basically a repeat of the preliminary PDD process. The only differences are at the final PDD, it has to fulfill any conditions of preliminary PDD. And at final PDD, we expect to see something more along the lines of site plan level detail. And that's often why applicants tend to combine final PDD with site plans, because they're doing the work anyway. And we encourage that, because we like to see those details at final PDD. The preliminary PDD just gives them a little bit of assurance when they're designing those site plans, that they have concept approval as they're doing utilities and grading and engineering work. And then, similar to preliminary PDD, the final PDD has a public hearing. It's duly noticed, the same as preliminary. And then, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation of the final PDD, and then it goes to the Township Board for final action on a PDD. And then, the same for site plan, except the site plan doesn't require a public hearing.
So, there's an opportunity for us to look at it with those conditions addressed, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we have to look at the motion.
Well.
There's two motions in here.
Sorry, could you speak into the mic?
So, we need to look at the motion and see if there's anything we need to add on, and if we want to add anything on besides that, so.
Right. I printed those in case anybody wants to take a look at them on paper.
Yeah.
You want to do that?
So, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, I'm in agreement with Summer that this is the first step. The concept is a good concept. There's no real killers or deal breakers here. I think they've complied mostly, and there's a few conditions that can be addressed with the final plan. I'm comfortable with moving forward with preliminary.
Madam Chair, point of order. So, if we have four conditions in the recommending approval resol, are there any additional that we'd like to add if we're going to approve the preliminary PDD? We have four. Is there a five or a six that we'd like to add as we move forward? And that's any commissioner? I can think of one, myself, and that is, number five, the developer needs to come, you know, into compliance with, you know, information from Eagle that presents permitting to this particular development and not the credits and things that would have happened with the previous development. That would be one thing. Hopefully, there's time enough to be able to make sure that that happens and transpires, but that would be a five. If we have another, we can add that.
I would, I would comment, beyond just modifying the traffic impact study, because I don't think the traffic impact study really discussed all the things that we've talked about, like whether the left-hand turn lane can be extended all the way down Ford Road and all that. I would like to see more of a, some sort of feedback from the county or MDOT, if that's possible. I just think that needs to be looked at more in depth before I'd be comfortable approving a final PDD on this.
We'll add that in one. We'll add that.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything?
Well, the left-turn lane can't be built because of that clinic.
Well, I want to hear the county and the state say that.
Agreed, agreed. I mean, we know the answer, but.
Well, it can be done. They own, if the truly, the right-of-way is there, I mean, what it means is they have to do something to get rid of that property. I mean, whether it's the remnant domain or whatever tool they choose to use. But, I want to hear what their reasons are for that specifically.
And then, with the model motion, one thing I wanted to bring up, if the motion is to recommend approval of conditions, in the model motion, at the end of the introductory paragraph, we note fulfilling conditions prior to Township Board review of the preliminary PDD application. I think for conditions two through four, I think that's possible. With condition one, I don't think that's possible at the preliminary stage. I do think it's possible to explore prior to final PDD review. So, that's something that, based on the discussion, for the condition number one, in terms of modifying the traffic impact study, it'd have to be reworded some way in terms of exploring the traffic impact study with MDOT prior to final PDD review and deferring a decision on Manikin Smith's recommendation to final PDD review.
I guess I disagree with you, Patrick, but whatever. I mean, I'm not going to argue it anymore. I'm just, I'm just really tired of the Ford Road discussion, and I'm tired of hearing that we can't do something. I'm just, it's really hard, and it's unfair to the developers, to be honest with you, to, for us to be held up on what, making the right decision on the development over something that we don't have control. And, you know, I know Summer has talked about it. I know Brian has talked about it. There needs to be dialogue with Wayne County and MDOT about Ford Road, because this is ridiculous. You know, we have a resident here who's complaining about traffic on Ford Road, and I don't disagree with him. But, you know, but I also want to see the developments come to Canton, too. And I'm not, I'm not in favor of approving a development, because we think it's the right thing to do, but at the same time, holding up a developer, because we don't like what's happening on Ford Road. This is, this is just ridiculous. It really is. It makes us powerless, as far as I'm concerned. Sorry, sorry to vent, but I'm just tired of this discussion about Ford Road.
Madam Chair, I can move forward with the model motion, if you like.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I move to recommend approval of Viva Bene preliminary PDD application, planning application number 062-PDP-8525 on parcel 062-99-0005-700, subject to all state, county, and township requirements and subject to the following conditions being fulfilled prior to Township Board review of the preliminary PDD application. One, modifying the traffic impact study and PD plans in accordance with Manik Smith Group's comments. Two, updating the PD agreement to include the definite benefits and schedule of modifications. Three, widening the internal road to 27 feet. And four, revising the plans to address Planning Division staff comments on plan information, loading space length, and sign locations. And we'll add five responses to additional Planning Commissioner recommendations as stated tonight.
I support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? No? All right, Commissioner Weber, could you please call the vote?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber, yes. Commissioner Zuber.
Yes. Motion carries. All right, we wish you the best. Thank you. Good luck.
And the next steps for this, this will be on the next available Township Board agenda for consideration, which I think will not be until May 13th of my calendar, is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving right along, we have old business this evening. We have two zoning ordinance text amendments. I think that's supposed to be ordinance, but anyway. I didn't notice it on the first one. First, we're going to talk about tree and woodland preservation. I'm sorry, I'm getting tired.
Are we just setting a public hearing?
Yeah. So, Patrick, what do we need to know?
I'll keep it brief. It's just a follow-up of what we looked at last month of compiling all the Planning Commission comments into the draft ordinance itself. So, at this point, the ordinance is in final form, ready to set a public hearing. So, we recommend scheduling the public hearing at the next available Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. And you have a model motion?
I'll get there in a minute. Oh, I'll make the motion, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
I move to set the public hearing for the proposed amendments to Article 5A of the zoning ordinance, providing the attached ordinance proposal for tree and woodland preservation regulations.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster. Do we need to call, do we need to have a voice vote, or can we have a voice vote for this, or does it need to be individual?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome. All right. The zoning ordinance text amendment for signs. Patrick, give us the brief rundown.
Sure. Similar to tree preservation, we've compiled the comments made previously by the Planning Commission, incorporated that into the draft, and documented the changes. So, similar to the tree ordinance, we recommend that a public hearing be set for the sign ordinance. One of the only differences is that there are several other articles in the zoning ordinance that are affected by signs. So, it's going to be a model motion for not just Article 6A, but some of the other articles that are related, that are included in the packet.
Thank you. Anybody want to make a model motion?
I'll do it again.
Oh, thank you.
I move to set the public hearing for the proposed amendments to Article 6A, Section 1.03, Article 2, Article 4, Article 6, Article 21, and Section 27.02 of the zoning ordinance, providing the attached ordinance proposal for sign regulations.
Was that you? Okay. Okay, so, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Janowski. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 084-SPX-7134, Canton Township Administration Building. We're considering site plan amendment for parcel number 084-99-0004-702, also known as 1150 South Canton Center Road.
I was right out of the box. I just wanted to think, I want to make a motion to table this indefinitely. Just so Mr. LaFever has to come back again.
No way. Well, I wasn't finished, so let me finish.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Property is located, in case we didn't know where this property was, it is located on the west side of Canton Center Road between Cherry Hill and Palmer Road, and it is proposed parking lot improvements. Patrick, please tell us more.
All right, thank you. So, this is a project that was actually approved a couple of years ago by the Planning Commission, and the project is underway. The part of the parking lot that's in the public safety area behind the building is mostly finished. It's looking really good. And we'll be proceeding to the south side of the parking lot this upcoming construction season. There have been a number of different internal changes to the layout of the parking lot that I won't go over in great detail, but ultimately, what it's resulted in is narrower landscape islands than the ordinance requires. The ordinance requires 12-foot-wide landscape islands for parking lot landscaping, and the islands that are proposed are narrower. It doesn't mean we can't plant trees there. We can still plant trees. We just have to be more selective about the species and the location. So, our recommendation is approval of the site plan amendment. Because it's a modification to the landscaping, the Planning Commission is able to grant a modification according to Section 5.07 of the ordinance. So, our recommendation would be approval of that modification, and then, just subject to the tree selection that we're working with our contractors on.
Excellent. Anything to add to that, John?
I'm just, I'm just curious, like, why couldn't that be, like, can you administratively approve that?
For narrower landscape islands?
Yeah, I was just curious, the way, right? I mean, it's so small.
No, technically, we can't. The Planning Commission can, which is, we're probably one of the better communities, because in other communities where the Planning Commission doesn't have that discretion, they have to go and get a variance and have a public hearing. So, even though sometimes, when you see these landscape modifications, occasionally, it may seem fairly minor, but we do much better than a lot of communities, where it would either be no, or they have to apply for a variance.
Nothing to add? No?
The tree plans will comply with the new tree ordinance, right?
It sure will.
Madam Chair, I have the ordinance. I mean, I have the model motion.
All right.
I move to approve the site plan amendment for the Canton Township Administration Building parking lot improvements, planning application number 084-SPX-7134 on parcel number 084-99-0004-702 at 1150 South Canton Center Road, including acceptance of the landscape plan and approval of modifications from the requirements of Section 5.02(c)(2) of the zoning ordinance for minimum parking lot island width pursuant to Section 5.07.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? All right, Commissioner Weber, could you call the vote, please? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I took it back, didn't I?
I got off that page a minute. Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber, yes, and Chairman Zuber.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Motion carries. Awesome. All right, do we need to talk about next steps for that?
I think we're all good.
Okay, good. I don't know. Just want to give you an opportunity.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next item on the agenda is new business. We have an item 074-DIR-8588, Canton Village Arts Factory Parking Lot. Boy, a lot of parking lots tonight. Consider site plan for parcel, what's that?
I said they're popular.
They are very popular. It's better than a bunch of chicken places, though, I guess. I don't know.
I don't know. You can never have enough of those.
All right. Consider a site plan for parcel number 074-99-0006-705, also known as 5077 and 50625, Cherry, 50755 and 50625 Cherry Hill Road. Property is located on the southwest corner of Cherry Hill Road and South Ridge Road. Proposed parking lot entrance, sidewalks, lighting, and landscaping update. Proposed parking lot entrance, sidewalks, lighting, and landscaping updates. Patrick, tell us all about it, please.
Sure, thank you. Joined by us tonight is Jeanette Ilo and John LaFever from the Community Development Department, and they're heading up the project for improvements to the Village Arts Factory. So, I'll be kind of brief in my review and let them go into the details. There are some site modifications to the site. The building on the east side of the site at the intersection, it's currently under construction for interior remodeling, and there are some exterior improvements as well, adding some parking spaces on the south side, notably some barrier-free parking spaces, making the easternmost drive outbound only, one-way. And then farther to the west, at the main Village Arts Factory, there's a drive that is outbound only. This drive here in the middle will be widened to allow two-way traffic in and out. So, there will be some traffic improvements farther west of the corner building, and then the outbound traffic only will help relieve some of the traffic that would otherwise be going west to exit the site if it's going eastbound. There's also some improvements for landscaping and lighting, and there is one modification recommended is the lower rouge runs through between the two sites that we're talking about with the buildings, and the ordinance requires a 75-foot setback from the top of bank. Obviously, here, there's an existing bridge and buildings from the bank, so there's already areas that don't comply with that. The site work is fairly minimal, and we recommend approval of the modification to do the proposed work within that 75-foot setback. If it's recommended by the planning commission, then the Board of Trustees has authorization to approve that modification. So, there's a model motion that's written recommending approval, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you. But, tell us more. Good to see you.
Good to see everyone tonight. Thanks, Patrick, for leading us in on this. We'll try to be brief, but our goal with this, we've come before the commission before with the factory modifications there at 50625, the corner white building, to get all of that approved, and that property is currently under construction right now, and we've been working with Fishbeck to come up with a design for the circulation pattern. Our architect that was on the building does not have really great civil experience, so we went with Fishbeck, which is one of our civil engineers that could help us with this project. And we know that with the Village Arts Warehouse, if you've ever been out there, the primary parking is right in front of the arts warehouse, the gray building, and there's not a lot of parking up against the 50625 factory corner building. And so, they will share parking lots primarily, but we wanted to make sure that we put some accessible parking spaces up against the building, just for general use of the facility, but also, one of our main users for that building will be therapeutic recreation. So, we know we need to make sure that we have ample parking for them there, as well as some additional spaces that will be available to the public, or they might be reserved if there's specific events going on and things like that. Those additional parking spaces also have sidewalk around them so that pedestrians can safely navigate around the parking spaces and not have to be cutting behind the parking areas to go to the buildings. And there are planter bollards along the bridge and along the factory 50625 building to help allow for safer pedestrian navigation through those spaces, and also look a little bit more aesthetically pleasing than just a bunch of bollards through that area. There isn't enough room on the bridge to be able to add a whole separate sidewalk area, so this was the best solution that our civil engineer could come up with at the time, and then still allow for two-way traffic to be able to circle back around and be able to go back to the main parking area if they can't use one of those initial spaces, or they just want to do a drop-off and return to be able to go westbound on Cherry Hill. When working with Patrick and also our civil engineer, we wanted to make sure that we had enough ways for people to exit the parking area, to be able to go out to Cherry Hill. Right now, there's not a lot of space for inbound and outbound right there in that middle drive access, so it would be widening that area so that people can come in, and then they can also exit both west and eastbound on Cherry Hill without backing up that parking area too much. By just widening it just a little bit more will help improve the circulation through that area. The warehouse, since the partnership for the arts has started programming, is busy seven days a week, all the time, with fitness classes, with arts programs, pottery, gymnastics, all different things going on. And we know that once the factory building opens up, it'll only continue to get busier in there, so the more circulation we can create, the better. And we know it's important to have landscaping and things like that. There is landscaping incorporated into the plan, and those bollards are intended to be irrigated so that they can continue to grow with different perennial species that are in there. The last thing that we haven't really talked a whole lot about is the sidewalk and stair access up to Ridge Road. We know that because the parking lot behind Indigo is getting built up and expanding its space, that there'll be people that will be parking there and not going all the way to the corner, and they want to get quickly to the arts warehouse for their events and programs, as well as neighbors that live to the south there will be using the sidewalks, and people always take the shortest access route. So, while there is sidewalks that go all the way around the northeast side of the building, we did want to add a sidewalk stairwell access point to this southern part of the building, just so that people that choose to take that quickest route have a more safe way to navigate that. But certainly, if they want an accessible route, they can continue to use the sidewalk that will wrap around the building. And if there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there, I assume that we can't get a crosswalk there or anything like that?
My assumption is it's probably too close to the intersection to have a crosswalk right there, but it could be, if we find that there's a lot of people unsafely navigating it, we can always work with the county to see if there's ways that we can either sign it better or explore other options.
Yeah, sometimes when it's that close to an intersection, a crosswalk invites an illusion of safety.
Yeah.
And it's not safe, you know?
Gotcha.
Just one question. The drawing had this outline of a, the whole area was in yellow. There's a yellow outline for the whole site. Yeah, the parcel, I meant. What's going on with the rest of it?
So, the whole, the township acquired the whole parcel from the partnership from the arts in 2023. So, Patrick outlined the whole property. Right now, the northeast corner is the white factory building that's getting remodeled into a multipurpose recreation community center. The middle building, which is the arts warehouse, it's a gray-colored building, will continue to operate with multiple tenants, offering programming and selling their wares in that building and running special events. Throughout the winter, they've been doing that. The indoor farmer's market has been housed out there. Historically, it was at the summit.
Okay, I don't want to, that's great. I think I've heard most of that.
And then we are talking about in the future.
But I was talking about the rest of it, like, do you have any plans? Are you looking to do anything?
Yep. So, we have been talking, we've gone through a couple of different design renderings of how we can put some trails and pathways and boardwalks through there. We haven't flushed it out enough to be able to bring it for funding and things like that, but there is an intention that we will be able to use the rest of that space so that people can immerse themselves in nature and enjoy that part of the community. Yep.
Anything else? I did not print this motion.
I got it. Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the Canton Village Arts Factory Parking Lot Site Plan, Planning Application Number 074-DIR-8588, located at 50755 and 50625 Cherry Hill Road. Parcel number is written there. Subject to all state, county, and township requirements, except modifications recommended pursuant to Section 2.16b of the zoning ordinance for proposed site work and structures within the 75-foot buffer required by Section 2.24(c) of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster. Any further discussion? All right, Commissioner Weber, could you call the vote, please?
Yep. Oh, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I keep losing that page. Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber, yes. Chairman Zubor.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
John, did you want to talk? I mean, I don't want to deprive you of your...
You already gave me credit for the parking lot project, that I have nothing to do with.
Oh, sorry, that wasn't yours, that wasn't yours, sorry.
I'll take it and run.
Okay.
Madam Chair, point of information. Patrick, is the rest, is any of that parcel wet at all? I didn't look at the wetland map. I just wanted, it is, I'm with Clarence, it's a huge parcel, and I didn't know if any of it was wet.
I think there are some wetlands there.
Okay, got it.
Yes, there are.
Got it, thank you.
Jeanette mentioned boardwalks, so I sort of inferred that, but...
Yeah, it's wet to the back.
Wanted to point out, too, so the idea on the bottom part of that parcel is to connect the neighborhood to the southwest. The whole idea, and we really just ran out of money with the project, so initially, within that budget, was going to be to develop that boardwalk. We've got it, we've got a plan, we've got it. It's a large circle that goes all the way in, it had some nature spots, interpretive signage and all of that. So, it was really to be a way for anyone living in a neighborhood to the west to enter into the Cherry Hill Village and draw them in through that, through that route. And so, it's definitely part of the plan, hopefully it's maybe a future phase, but it's there, it's just a price, it's got a healthy price tag to it, so, what's that?
It's worth sharing.
Yeah, it is very worth sharing.
You should get an idea overall.
But it is all wetlands, and it's, but yeah, so it'd be a raised boardwalk throughout there, but it'd be very cool if and when we get there, so.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you. Awesome. All right. Next item on our agenda is the master plan, during which we are going to set a public hearing, but it looks like Aaron's got more to say than just that.
If you guys just want to set the public hearing, that's totally fine with me.
I have a question about what you sent us, because I looked at all the neighborhood node drawings, and I guess I didn't realize that, that I didn't think about all of them. And when I'm thinking about all of them and seeing that they're going to be all neighborhood-centric and no auto-centric, in other words, no gas stations, there's a lot of gas stations on those corners already. So, if we're going to say we really prefer that we not have gas stations in the neighborhoods like that, where do the gas stations go?
Well, we already, the ones that are already there, they can continue to stay there.
Right, but if they go away, they go away forever.
Well, if they go away, if they were to, the underlying zoning district is still applied, so there could still be a gas station there. However, we would prefer to have a mixed-use neighborhood node developed in that area. Now, if they want to do a bonus density or any of the things that we would be codifying in our ordinance, they would have to then follow those regulations. But the underlying zoning district on what can be there, that still applies, no different than forward and back. We have it identified as a node, but if someone wanted to do a strictly residential, they still could.
Okay. That helps.
But if they were to redevelop one of those corners, excuse me, and a gas station currently exists there, and they want to put it there, but also redevelop and do this commercial mixed-used area, the gas station would be required to be removed.
I have a question. I thought I had looked at all the potential nodes. I must have, I don't remember talking about node number 13, Proctor and Denton. I have a lot of, I have some concern about identifying the property to the south of Independence Park as a neighborhood node. I would hate to see that, that much foliage go away, just because, and I hate to see it get master planned for a node. If we do that, the potential's there, it's going to go away, so.
Well, that property is owned by Canton Township.
Right.
So, the intent and the reason that that was identified as a potential node, not only the area north of Independence Park, north of Proctor, and then south, was so that if those areas were to be developed for, you know, fully developed for parking to support, say, the Canton Cup or something like that, we could still use that area to allow for a small neighborhood store, bathrooms, things that would also support that, that area and Independence Park itself.
But if it was developed as a parking lot, if it was developed as a parking lot, that would still not, that would go against my concern about that density of tree cover going away. I mean, I just, I'm not in favor of seeing that go away, at least at that location, so.
Yeah, and those would be things that we would look at during site plan review, and part of the narrative related to that particular node was to make sure that a lot of that, a lot of those trees would be preserved, so it wouldn't be removing every single tree that's on that property. And remind, these are just potentials, opportunities for development to happen. We included a Canton Township project on their, or property in this node discussion. Because Independence Park is so heavily frequented, we thought it would be a good idea to have an opportunity to develop that for these types of mixed-use to support the Canton Cup, just as a major draw to the community, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to happen.
I just feel like you're kind of opening, cracking open the door a little bit for that to happen. I mean, I get that it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen, but I just, I just think if you leave that master planned as open space, or whatever the term is we use in the zoning ordinance about that type of area, that it would diminish the possibility of that happening, but that's just my opinion, so.
We can go through any number of these, specifically, I have two examples that we can walk through on how it was going to look in the text, if anybody had any questions, but all the texts, yep, Gordon's saying yes, he wants to go into, in detail, detail?
I know he does, he wants to go, I know.
He's always looking for all the details.
So, all of these were provided in the packet, so you could look at it and see, and a lot of the text, if you look, a lot of things were repeated, the uses, the permitted uses versus the prohibited, but this was provided to illustrate how much we want to make sure that these are designed and developed appropriately within the context of the neighborhood.
I think all of us here were comfortable with the node concept and all that, I think it, except for maybe Commissioner Aggenberger.
Well, she's not here.
But she's not here to defend herself, so she loses tonight.
No, no Nancy.
No, no Nancy.
She's over in Switzerland or whatever.
I think the illustrations were more for the benefit of a lot of the questions that came up out of the public comment and that sort of thing, so. I'm... Guess we've heard.
You want to make?
Aaron, I have, I do have a question.
Yeah.
The next steps in the process, so we would approve the public hearing tonight. I know we're having a township meeting, township board meeting tomorrow where we're going to talk about this. What are the next steps after we set the public hearing?
Yeah, so tomorrow evening, we'll be presenting this in detail to the township board, because they haven't seen this expanded text yet. So, we will be presenting that to the township board tomorrow evening. If the planning commission sets the public hearing for the next available planning commission meeting, and in light of any comments that the board has, we will be finalizing the document with our planning consultants and making it all look very pretty and beautiful and everything else. May 5th would be the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, so the public hearing will be held that evening. You would have the document in hand well before that, so we could address any issues, hold the public hearing, recommend for adoption. Township board would get the document at the June 13th meeting and hopefully adopt it, and then it goes on the website, and we start implementing.
Can I ask? One, the node drawings, like you, I'm sorry, you have here Novi, Royal Oak.
Yep.
How are these related to the node? I mean, does it, okay, put it together for me. I'm just trying to see, you got Royal Oak, Novi. Is that a node particular to a certain area that you have an idea of what it might look like? How is that?
Yeah, because the commission had asked for some visual examples of how things had developed, and we had talked about these two particular communities before. So, Novi was a developed area, the northwest area of Grand River and Meadow Brook. It was a vacant property with residential, but it also had some commercial and indoor recreation behind it, and so this northwest area was developed with single-story, on a single parcel, single-story commercial with townhomes, green space, and everything behind it. So, this is how a... So this is how a, a vacant property could be developed in, in a dense, high-trafficed area.
Okay, that's Novi.
That's Novi, yep.
What about Royal Oak?
Royal Oak, so this is the development of an existing site. So the first image is from 2015. This was a single-story commercial strip mall that had been in place since the...
It comes together, I'm sorry.
Since the 50s, I'm sorry?
Um, it, it's, it's late. I didn't know what a F, I thought a, I didn't know what a flu was.
Oh.
I saw flu.
Future land use map.
Thank you.
Sorry.
See, and I just caught that, so I, I must be tired, okay?
Yeah, I think you might be.
Thank you.
I thought a flu was a chimney, but...
Exactly.
Aaron, I love that you have the, on the second page here, I guess it's the third slide, you have the public comment, general impressions, well done, amazed, impressed, pleased. Lot of work, great efforts, reconsider, do nothing.
Yeah, it's scale, you know?
Yeah.
Do nothing was actually, was actually a quote, you know, someone said...
What's that?
The, the do nothing was a quote.
Yeah, I remember that.
It was a quote, yeah, I know, I know, love that, love that, okay. Very helpful.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I think we do. I move to set the public hearing for Canton's vision for tomorrow, a comprehensive community master plan that complies with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act.
Support.
All right, excellent. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion?
We do this by voice vote?
Yeah, can we do a voice vote? Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Awesome, all right. Motion carries. Great job, Aaron, as always. We've come to expect great jobs from you. Anything else, anybody? All right, you've got to, turn on your, turn your mic on and say that into the mic.
Move adjourned.
Thank you.
Oh, before we...
Maybe we should just make...
Sorry, I don't mean to, I just wanted to just bring up our email correspondence today about the Mecca site on the east side of Ridge, north of Ford.
Oh, yes.
So we had just shared some information between Commissioner Cruz and the county in terms of some comments about that, and some of it's a continuation of, of the previous meeting where the rezoning was considered. So just wanted to put that on the record, that there was that email exchange, and at the time of special land use, we'll bring it out again, but in the interim, we'll talk to our engineering division about it, and they can work through the county as well. So I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, go to do...